Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business.
Order only in order to recommend that we adjourn to executive session to discuss settlements with employees for workman's comp claims. I declare that to not go into executive session could damage the town's position.
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
And Brown, aye. Well, I have seven o'clock here. Note to FCTV that we're going to start our meeting now, and I call this select board meeting to order February 14th, Valentine's Day. Sorry for having you all here on Valentine's Day. Just kind of rolled that way. We're going to begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance, if you all join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Megan, did you want to do a recognition?
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize the life and the passing of Shirley Baker, who passed away really tragically with a car accident after that terrible weather that we had just over a week ago, and actually, her funeral is today. But she was someone who, her parents owned lots of shops right here on Main Street, and she managed, worked in those from a young age, and then managed a lot of the wonderful places that we enjoy going into were properties that she and first her parents, and then she and her husband Terry Baker managed for years. They owned the Black Duck, which has its wonderful storied history that some folks are still living off of in Woods Hole, and was just a really special place. And she was someone who, I don't think a lot of people knew this, but we have a lot of folks who are chronically homeless in town, and Shirley, sometimes you wouldn't see them in the winter and you'd worry, and they weren't around because she had put them up in a hotel when it got cold and had done, just made sure that they were getting hot meals. And so she's one of those people who will be gone, and our community would be sort of lesser for it, because she did things very silently and quietly, but in a way that impacted so many people's lives. And so I hope that we just are able to honor her, and she was just one of a kind. And so just want to think about her tonight and hopefully be able to keep some of the wonderful things she did for our community alive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Anybody else have anything for recognition? Anybody want to make any announcements? I have one. Just wanted to mention that FCTV is holding the One Falmouth Telethon on Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM. FCTV.org, or Channel 13, I guess. And they're going to be highlighting 14 of the organizations in town that do a lot of good work. I'm not going to start mentioning them all because it's a long list, but if you tune in at 6:00 PM, I think you'll enjoy it.
I have one other quick announcement. VIPS, our Volunteers in Public Schools, did their I Love VIPS fundraising that just went on for the beginning of February. And just for folks to think about maybe giving, whatever you can give, VIPS is just an enormous part of our community. They do incredible things. During COVID, they were able to just really evolve and continue to offer support services for students without really missing a beat, and have been able to grow some of the services even during a time when it's been challenging. So they help with mentoring, with tutoring, with getting into college, and really, across the board, offer so many great services. So if you think about it, you can go to the website and donate, and if you don't want to donate resources, you can certainly think about other ways. You can donate your time to them, because they're always looking for more volunteers.
And VIPS is Volunteers in Public Schools in Falmouth.
Okay, any other announcements? All right, very well. Now, time for public comments. Is anyone here for public comment this evening?
Maury Harlowhawks, Nine Old Dock Road. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here tonight regarding the SAFER grant. I think pretty much everybody's familiar with that. It was for getting help with the fire department. And I had emailed Chief Smith on February 3rd, and I knew he was extremely busy with the effects of the storm, but he did reply, and he said that as far as he knew, that no application has been made to request for a SAFER grant for personnel. The town administration at a recent Board of Selectmen meeting to discuss the upcoming budget for Springtown Meeting noted adding three additional personnel to FY23 budget. We will continue to work with the town administration to address staffing now and in the future, and thank you for the support in the community and all your endeavors. And so then I decided to reach out to Mr. Suso on February 7th and explain to him that I, again, I'll read it to you. I reached out to Chief Smith regarding SAFER grant application for the staffing of the fire department, and he said no applications have been made at this time. Will the town apply for one to help offset costs in three new hires you announced at the select board meeting? It would be fiscally beneficial to the taxpayer to receive this free money. He replied promptly, and he said that the proposed FY23 Falmouth operating budget includes the addition of three firefighters to the existing fire department staffing. There is no need to pursue a SAFER grant for this purpose, as funding is available. Be assured that grants often have significant requirements, not all of which are any community's best interest, and must be considered carefully under all circumstances. My understanding, for instance, is that these grants require a confirmation that no funds are currently available for the proposed purpose. This is not the case, as I have noted. Then I reached out to Lance Harbor, who is Region 1 RRCC Deputy Service Branch Director of FEMA. And I'm not going to get long into this, but his reply is, "I have attached the notice funding opportunity for 2021 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant, SAFER grant. The answer to your question is on page 59, under the hiring activity and eligible costs. As long as the positions in question are not employees at the time of the award, they are eligible." So that was good information. I think we are eligible for the SAFER grant. And that being said, so in the case of the override this year, it's proposed, not approved, budget for three new hires. In any past year that firefighters were hired, it would seem that SAFER funding would have offset the salaries and benefits for three years. The year of the override, the eight firefighters cost close to $1 million, if I remember correctly, and the SAFER grant would have been in excess of $2 million, I believe. The question for the board is why the town manager allowed to continue in not pursuing this important grant? The former state fire marshal, I remember, brought this matter up at the board's and town manager's attention during select board discussion on West Falmouth staffing last fall. Why is Falmouth so different that this program has been criticized by Mr. Suso when it has been effective funding source for eight other Cape communities? I will listen for you. Sandwich, Yarmouth, Bourne, Wellfleet, East, Ham, Brewster, Barnstable, and Dennis, for a total amount of funding of $5,798,398. During last week's select board meeting during a discussion, it's literally that much. Spending priorities for APRA funds. Select board member Megan English-Brager properly commented, "Those are much-needed funds for a lot of projects we have been discussing." The same could be said for the funds that could have been secured with SAFER grant. When will we stop leaving substantial amounts of grant money on the table every year? The taxpayer deserves the benefit of the grant money. Hopefully, this board may be able to shed some light on this subject. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Mr. Moriarty, do you have some public comments to hear?
Yeah, I just, hi, everybody. Dave Moriarty, citizen of Falmouth, lifelong citizen of Falmouth, Mass. I just have a question about the RFP on the wind turbines. Where is it? Is it out yet? What's going on? That's my comment.
Do you care to comment on that?
Invitation for bid will go out this month.
Wait a minute. I thought we were going to have it by the end. I thought we were going to have it in two weeks from last time.
For debate, respectfully.
Board of Order.
Did give you an answer, Mr. Moriarty.
That's the answer. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, Mr. Suso, town manager's preliminary report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to touch on a few items upcoming. You have two public hearings, one on a dock wetlands, one on an alcohol license. Just to clarify, you had one that involved Mr. Saleen at your last meeting. That was for a different address, 91 Adam Ansett Road. This is 95 Adam Ansett Road, and I know that the board has received considerable comments both ways on that proposal. The board will also hear a COVID update from Health Agent Scott McGann, and Scott is meeting with the Board of Health as we speak. At Peter McConity's request, Cape Cod Commission is making a presentation this evening on Complete Streets. The Town Meeting Petition Article Presentations routinely scheduled, as they are each year, to the board. We're bringing a forward draft special events policy, as the board is aware, based upon your recent direction. And also, you have a discussion item on the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant decommissioning, and under administrative orders, Auto Camps requesting to withdraw their liquor license. That is not related directly to the septic issue before the Board of Health, but there is a comment on that, I believe, and I think that representative will be in attendance this evening. And lastly, I'm asking for retroactive approval for two grant filings under the consent agenda through the Planning Department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Suso. Next, we have committee interviews, and for the Affordable Housing Committee, Stephen Kraft. Is Mr. Kraft here this evening? Welcome. Would you like to tell us why you'd like to be on that committee?
Sure, absolutely. Hi, everyone. My name is Stephen Kraft. I'm applying for the Affordable Housing Committee. My previous experience in housing relates to policy and residential development lies mostly in urban areas, and I've been working with the Affordable Housing Committee and attending meetings for about the last six months since the last time I applied to be on the committee. And I've been getting acquainted with the work that they've done, and their ongoing work. In 2020, I completed my master's in urban planning and community development at UMass Boston. I've taken classes on Massachusetts housing policy, comprehensive planning, and other relevant topics. And I'm ready to contribute to making Falmouth more accessible and affordable for families that want to come here and want to remain here.
Well, thank you. I'm so glad to see you're willing to share your knowledge with this urban planning and so forth that you've been working on.
I move that we appoint Stephen Kraft to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee for a term ending June 30th of 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
And next, four committee interviews. EDIC, Adrian Merriman and Mark Lowenstein. Is either of those folks here? Come on up, please.
Adrian Merriman.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Quite a resume you sent us. Career already, wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to just share a little bit about the highlights of how that career will apply in Falmouth?
Let me start by maybe sharing as to why I'm interested. I have, and my family have, a passion for Falmouth. I've been coming here since I was a toddler. My mother retired here in 97, and my family and I have made this our permanent home since 2003, so we very much care about it and want to see it better, and everything about it better. There's been an interesting change in paradigm since COVID hit. Where and how people are working is changing dramatically, and that brings a lot of opportunities. It brings a lot of challenges. I think I have a background that can help navigate some of those, and I think the EDIC is one of those places where I can help serve and give back to a community that's been wonderful for our family. Background, I have an extensive background globally in finance, in venture capital, in running companies, and in building banks to serve the poorest and the most fragile parts of the world, and the most vulnerable people. And I would love to be able to bring background in finance, technology, et cetera, and bring it to bear here, and that's it.
Well, that's great. I really appreciate it. Questions from the board? Comments? Thank you so much. I really appreciate you being willing to share your expertise in this endeavor, so I'm sure you'll be a very good addition to the EDIC.
I move that we appoint Adrian Merriman to the EDIC for a position ending June 30th of 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lowenstein here this evening?
Yes.
Welcome.
Mark Lowenstein, 537 West Falmouth Highway. Answer your question. I'm assuming you'll ask me?
Yes, sir.
What can I contribute? Long career in high tech, ended up being a college professor when I was living in Vermont, teaching at a school. I was appointed to the Rutland County Economic Development Commission, so I have a few years in this type of industry. And since I've been living down here, I've been heavily involved in SCORE, which is a small business mentoring service provided by the SBA. And essentially, that's a low level of economic development, trying to help small businesses start. And what I've noticed in Falmouth, which is a great town, it is a mixed economic environment here. And there's plenty of people with money, and there's plenty of people that don't have it. So if I can help the committee do things that would help raise all boats, so to speak, that would be great. So my involvement in SCORE, I believe I can bring a lot to that. I have a law degree and a bunch of business experience. I was an entrepreneur myself, and so I'm hoping I can help the group. I got involved with the group over a year ago when they were giving away COVID. I was asked to be on a committee with the COVID $10,000 grants to different businesses. Spent time interviewing the businesses and trying to help them make sure they spent the money properly, and they would stay in business. And then I was asked if I'd be considered to be on the committee. It's a good bunch of people, so I'd like to help out the town if I can.
Sounds like I believe you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I move to appoint Mark Lowenstein to the position with a term ending 630, 2022.
They have to come back not too long from now, but...
That's fine.
It's okay. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lowenstein. Appreciate your service.
Please do. We're sorry that this is such a short term, but it's filling us an expert meeting, if anyone wanted. We want you to reapply.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Next, we have Wetlands Dock hearing. We're a little early. Should we take care of some other business in the interim?
Can we just do a general shout-out to ask folks to go ahead and look on the town website to look at committee vacancies, because there are some. And so for individuals who maybe are really dying to get involved and do something for the town, a lot of these committees are a great way. You're not there all the time, but you get to meet a great group of people and just connect with something that you really care about. So if you go to the town website, you can see which vacancies are open, and just take a look at it, because the strength of our committees is something that this board really relies on, and the town does, so.
Certainly true. I would second that. I would have to say that when I started getting involved with committees and village association in East Falmouth, it just really enriched my life, and the group of people that I started to get to know, really, you just can't replace it, so it's really great.
Can we take up the special events policy change? I think we can get that in in 10 minutes.
Uh, yeah? I guess so?
Yeah, only have five minutes for it.
I don't think we're going to have any.
Yeah, the only thing that I've been reading is that this is not pertinent to the particular amendment that's being suggested, but in the purpose, where it reads that "The purpose of this policy is to regulate events that take place on town property in a manner that balances public enjoyment of the town property and support for local businesses while protecting public health and safety." And then it says, "Limiting negative impacts," and it seems to me we should be saying just managing negative impacts to surrounding neighborhoods, such as noise, traffic, and preventing. I'd like to see that word simply modified, because I don't think we always want to just simply eliminate it. That's essentially what limiting would be.
Okay. Before we go too far, I'd just like to give the public a little background.
Sure.
So we've got, we had a meeting on January 15th to discuss some of the suggestions made by the Charter Review Committee. They recommended charter changes, but also they recommended some action by the board to streamline the board's efficiency, remove some of the items that may be slowing us down from paying attention to the larger, big-picture policy items. And one of those was to consider special events be controlled internally by the professional staff, and have the professional staff hold public meetings, so the people with special events coming up have their opportunity to vet those dates and have a more finite process. What we've had recently is the Special Events Committee has done a great job of organizing and presenting to us, but it comes to us sort of at the last minute, and then we just say, "Okay, let's try to figure out if it's all organized and good," and we say, "Okay," and we stamp it. But then we've had a couple of conflicts over the last couple of years that make us realize that this system isn't really working as well as it should. So hopefully, this will be an improvement.
And also, just leave hopefully more time during our meetings for substantive things that we need to talk about, not that these events aren't important, but they can sometimes just take up a lot of time.
Agreed.
And we will still have ultimate authority. If applicants for events are not pleased with the process, they can appeal to us and say that maybe we should still intervene. So we're not going away completely, but just on the day-to-day.
Another commission, I think, in an original, well, this is a draft, so, under special events policy, the second paragraph and the second sentence under there, there's a list of organizations that do not have to get special event approval, and school department is not reflected here. And they have all kinds of events, but I think they should be noted as along with the recreation department, and the library trustees, and the parks department. So we should add special, the school department, as one that doesn't have to come up for special event approval.
Well, we could run into some conflicts then, if they don't have to apply.
I don't think they ever have to.
I know. The schools are...
Well, they do on their own property.
Right, and they're really completely separate. And I'm not sure, I totally understand what you're saying, Sam, but I also think it confuses things, because I really see the schools as separate and doing their own thing, and they don't ever really have to come in front of us for anything. They have their own board. Their own board makes their decisions, and I just didn't know if we would even bring them up.
But there are times when they do use town property, and I think they have their own school committee, as you're pointing out, just like the recreation department has its own board, and so does the rec building. And I just think they should be noted as an exception, that they don't have to request special events, that they have their own vetting process, if you will.
Okay.
And then can I just raise a comment that I know we got from Solid Waste Advisory, from Alan and Linda Davis as well, who said she was going to be here and probably may show up for something that she thought was on for eight. We've talked about this before, just making sure that we include really clear language in our policies about what people do with the waste from their events, right? So they're recycling, and making sure that we address those issues, so that however those events dispose of their trash is in line with how we are disposing of the trash as a community, right? Because we've had that concern before. I'll just raise that both for Alan and Linda, and we have discussed that before, and I think we have some language, but we could probably make even clearer language on our permits.
And there will be occasions, I believe, that the select board will still be needed to be involved. For instance, I've been fielding a lot of concerns about the On the Water event that happens at the marina, and there's been multiple requests to consider a new venue for that. So I don't know if that's something that the Special Events Committee will take on themselves, or if they might bring that back to us.
Isn't this a little out of order? I mean, this is a general policy that we're doing here. It's really how you would handle a situation like, that's an example.
It's the process of...
Yeah, it's an example, so I don't want you to point it out, and here's an example of where this review process could come into a situation where it ought to be elevated to the select board.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So I don't see that in here, but I guess, do you see any language in here that reflects that?
Wasn't there an opportunity for the applicant to actually appeal to the select board in here?
Well, there was. I thought we had talked about that, but I don't...
That was a question that I had.
Yeah, I think you got it in here somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was in there, and I read it.
I think we should maybe add a little language reflecting that.
I made a note to ask about denial options for the applicant.
I made a note to ask about denial options for the applicant, because I didn't think I saw it anywhere.
We'll make certain that that's included. Okay, thank you.
Any concerns about the use policy, other than the adding the language for the trash and recycling?
No, we already have a section that we talk about removing all trash, so we can actually just add that, we can add some more specificity in that section.
Okay.
And really emphasize the recycling piece.
Right.
It sounds good to me. This is just a draft review.
Just a revision, yeah, so we'll probably have to revisit this again with a little, a little bit of a tune up.
Yep.
And we may come back to it at eight if people come and still wish to speak on it.
Yep.
Okay. Set that aside in case it comes back up. You think we're close enough to 7:30?
If I read the public hearing announcement, I'll do it slowly. The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240, 14.8 Wetlands Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws, the Town of Falmouth on Monday, February 14th, 2022, at 7:30 in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, on the application of Dana M. Solian and Chris M. Horiuchi for permission to construct, permit, and license a stairway, walkway, and boat launch on the waters of Kuna Meset Pond, a great pond located 95 Adam Ansett Road, Hatchville, Mass. Area affected is Kuna Meset Pond. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the office of the Select Board. This was published the 28th of January and the 4th of February, because this was continued.
Right. Is there anyone here for the applicant who wishes to speak?
Is there a projection here?
Here is the computer there. You just pull the drawer out.
Peter will help you.
How you doing? Good, how are you?
Good.
Let's see what we got. Here you go. I don't know what. He would be, oop, he just, there it is. It's only 95. That one.
Yeah, that did not work out with the way. I thought it was going to.
I have a few paper copies ready for them.
Okay.
You can, I'll, I'll look over.
I think we have smaller versions.
Actually, the screen will be fine.
Oh, yeah. I don't think we need to.
Are we ready?
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dan Solian. I am the property owner, which is perhaps unique in these presentations. Jeff, who is the civilian chair in the project, is, is feeling a little under the weather, you know, tonight, so he asked me to step in, and fortunately, I do have some experience presenting projects to public commissions. So my wife, Chris Horiuchi, and I own 95 Adam Ansett Road, which is, you know, a property that fronts on, Adam Ansett Way, which fronts on the, on the pond. We bought the property last fall. It has a two-bedroom seasonal cottage, you know, on it that has historically been a rental property owned by the DePey family, which developed the entire area of Adam Ansett. So the, so the proposal is to, is to install and maintain a dock on the shore of Kuna Meset Pond. The dock is four foot wide by 47 foot long, a little bit of structure, you know, steel pipes with, with wood decking. It's, it has two features. One is a stairway or still a stair into the pond. The other feature is a, is a kayak launch. It's been sort of misstated or misrepresented, I think, in grander terms as a boat launch. It's, it's really amounts to a sloped section of the dock that has some rollers, you know, on it, which enables you to get in and out of the pond safely and even, even, well, well, stay dry. And it also, I think very importantly, you'll see it here, it's where the kayak little symbol is represented on, on the end of the dock there. It also, the Conservation Commission was sensitive to this. It moves all of the activity related to getting in and out of the pond with the kayak away from the shoreline and out onto the end of the dock, so that there's no, so it's much less activity, you know, on the shoreline, which, which, you know, would be potentially disturbing, you know, the natural, you know, condition of the pond, you know, in the area. So, so, so that's really what, what that is. I'll just, you know, pass this down so you'll have a visual understanding of that, of that The, the project also includes a stairway up to the, up the hillside to the, to the So some may ask about the length of the, of the dock. The Conservation Commission has, has a policy where they like to have docks extend to the point where they can reach three feet of water, and I think that's to prevent the scouring of the, of the bottom of the pond by, by boats that come and go from the dock. So it's not our desire necessarily to have a 47-foot dock, but that is what the Conservation Commission requires, you know, in this, in this case. The, yeah, I just want to say that I believe this project has been, you know, reviewed and, and approved by the Harbor Master. Also, the Conservation Commission held a hearing. There were no environmental concerns stated about the dock, and if our order has, have you received our order, Jeff? So we have received our order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. And I believe we've also received a letter from the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries, and their only concern is that the dock be installed before April of each year, so that it not upset the schedule of the, of the spawn. But the, I know that, you know, the, your, your board has received some correspondence from our butters. I think almost all of my, all the butters to us, you know, have expressed support for this project. Mr. Amment is here tonight, you know, he, Bob Amment abuts, abuts me, and he can speak on his own behalf. So I guess maybe with that, I'll close, unless you have specific questions for me.
I was going to ask about the overall size and, you know, the need for this part. Is there some, I mean, we have received a lot of opposition emails to this, and it's generally regarding the overall size and the aluminum construction, and people are commenting that in their opinion, maybe, I don't know if they use that term, but maybe an eyesore or un, you know, inappropriate for the natural setting. Maybe it's too much metal and too much structure on the pond, and I'm wondering if you can explain why the need for all this.
Well, the, essentially, the design of the dock is simply, you know, to enable, you know, the embarking, well, the, the use of kayak, you know, from the, you know, from the end of the dock, as well as other sort of aquatic uses, of course, there'll be fishing and, you know, swimming and all other, you know, you know, activities that are common to the, to this, you know, situation. So, so essentially, the dock leads out to the kayak, you know, landing, and then simply, you know, sort of jogs around it to provide you a point to which you can actually, you know, climb into the kayak and, and push yourself off of the, off of the little ramp, you know, into the pond. So, I mean, that, that component of, I mean, the whole dock is, was essentially is a, is a manufactured, you know, system. You know, the, the ramp itself is a, is an engineered, you know, component. I'm not sure, I mean, we could perhaps, well, the, the surface of dock will be wood. You know, I think that in this day and age, it's, it's generally the case, you know, the docks are, are constructed of, you know, aluminum, because they're lightweight and easy to, you know, take in and out of, of the water. So I haven't, I don't know what options are available. Jeff, do you know?
Not with that fracture, but. Women frame, wood deck.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I also don't know how a change would affect our, our proposal, since, you know, it has been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission and others who's, who's have a role in this process.
Right. And then other comments were just the general size of it, and people like to kayak along the shore, and they feel like it's an obstacle. Anybody else want to summarize any of the comments that we received?
Pretty much.
I guess the question I have is, I mean, do they have standing to, you know, essentially prevent this from being issued? Because as far as I can see, it meets all of the requirements that are provided, you know, that are set down by the Conservation Commission, the Falmouth Wetlands Regulation. I mean, I, I heard their concerns, I mean, it's short of a community covenant that prohibits a dock, and I, I was going to ask that question. Are there any other docks on Kuna Meset Pond?
Sure.
There are other docks?
Yeah, there, I mean, I, I, I can't give you a count, but I can, you know, I've, I've owned property now for the last nine months on the pond, and I've, I've been around the pond on, on our canoe, and, you know, I can see, you know, docks from, you know, our properties. You know, so, so they're, it's, they're not unprecedented, you know, on the pond. In fact, as, as you know, you know, on a property that we own, you know, one lot removed, you know, from, from this property, you know, a dock was similarly proposed and approved by Conservation, the Harbor Master, Fisheries, and the Board of Selectmen, you know, within the last two weeks, you know, so, so there is that precedent. I think the only difference between that dock and this dock is that this dock is a little longer because of the water depth, you know, the need to reach the three-foot, you know, depth in the pond. It's just a kind of a shallow portion of the, of the pond, and then the, you know, the addition of the, of the kayak, you know, ramp. The other, the other thing about the, you know, the kayak component of this is that it also provides a storage location for a kayak pond side. Now, you know, residents of, of the Lockstead community, they've got a beach and they've got kayak racks and, you know, things, places to store. There's no place to store a kayak, you know, on land, you know, here, because it's only about three feet between the road and the pond, and then the hill, and then you have the hillside that goes, you know, steeply up, you know, so, so unless you store the kayak on the, on the dock, I think that the, it would be inevitable that whatever storage solution you found was, was more disturbing to the environment, because it was going to be either on the shore or on the hillside, or wherever, you know, you could find a place to put it. So this is actually a pretty elegant, you know, technique of, of, of providing for kayak activities with minimal disturbance, you know, of the shoreline. The only disturbance will be the four-foot width, you know, of the dock as it departs the driveway. So, so I think we've, we've looked for the best solution, given the, given the conditions that surround us.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I understand, you know, folks, you know, love to sort of kayak or canoe, but the reality is they're not going to be canoeing or kayaking where the dock would be necessarily, because the depth of the water is pretty shallow. So I think that this is, you know, it's not sending people on a huge, you know, jaunt outside of where they might be if they wanted to kind of, you know, go along the perimeter of Kuna Meset. And I think, you know, people buy property on the water so that they can enjoy being on the water, and this, to me, does seem like a way to allow that without being overly intrusive or leaving a large footprint on, you know, on that, that part of the pond.
Does, anybody else? Does, does Conservation Commission not have a process for approving docks in water that's more shallow if they're not for power boats? I mean, I know that the intent was the three feet to stop the prop wash from kicking up the bottom surface, but if it's really just for kayaks, I mean, do you feel like it needs to be as big as it is?
The, I don't, first of all, I can't answer your question. I don't know if they have an alternate policy, and we, you know, we didn't seek one. That, you know, the only other consideration that I would, and again, I'm not, we're not necessarily pursuing a longer, the longest dock we can, we can permit, permit, but I think water depth is, is, there are other concerns in addition to the prop, the propeller, you know, disturbance of the bottom. I, I grew up in Minnesota, you know, where, where everybody has a dock, you know, 10,000 lakes, there's a lot of docks, and, and no permitting, no permitting. A friend recently said, you mean, you just, you just don't need some pipes, you know, to put in a dock? And so, so I, so I think the concern also is, is water safety for children, you know, who might go off a dock, dive in to water that's shallow, shallower than three feet, you know, kayaking isn't the only thing that will happen there, and, and so, you know, I'd be a little concerned that, that we don't create a risk of injury, you know, to someone who might, you know, use a dock for diving.
Thoughts from the other board member? What do you think about this? It just seems that we've got, I think it was like 20 or more emails in opposition, and I don't know where, what we do with that as a board. And Mr. Patterson's made the point that if it meets all the criteria, we don't really have a right to deny it.
That's, that's my feeling. I mean, people may object that this is one of few docks on the pond, but this is a, a right under the regulations, so. And I think there are, there are rationales for the three-foot depth, because who knows that somebody won't put a small outboard on a boat and anchor it out there in another case, because people are always stretching the use of what their original hearing was all about. But, but I think it all comes back to the fact that there's nothing that prohibits his rights to build this dock. It fits into all of the requirements.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, were you going to ask for public comment as well?
I am.
Okay.
Could I just finish with one last comment, and that is that, again, the Conservation Commission held a public hearing, you know, for this, for this proposal, and the staff had no negative, you know, comments, you know, about it, no concerns. There were no concerns raised by the commission, and there were no concerns raised by the public, or any, or any of butter. I don't know what has caused, in the wake of that, you know, for there to be, you know, sort of controversy or, or upset, you know, about this. It's certainly not our, we've actually invested considerable energy and time to improve the properties that we've purchased, without really, with minimal changes, you know, to them, in fact, preserving a 120-year-old's, you know, structure in its existing form that we might have replaced with a structure twice the size. So, I mean, we're trying to be sensitive about, about things, and yet, you know, trying to also make changes that are going to make the properties work better for us and, and our family.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? The public have any comments?
My name is John Mintrelli. I live at 50 Fox Run Lane. In fact, I'm a neighbor of Dan's, right across the pond. Nice to see you. I guess our concern, or the neighbors that I've spoken to, is the size of the dock. I know Dan got approval for a dock at his other property, 91 Adam Ansett. That was an, at one point, there was an existing dock. That was an, at one point, there was an existing dock there, and I don't think any of the neighbors had any concern, and it's only 20 feet in length. Am I correct, Dan?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four feet in length. This is a brand-new dock. I'm not positive, but is the actual lot situated on the pond or is there an easement that is, goes across the private road there?
We have deeded rights for the installation of the dock.
Please come back to the microphone. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was talking.
Because it has to be public.
Right.
Okay.
It has to be broadcast, so your, your response needs to be through the mic.
Okay. We'll have to share the mic as we go.
Okay. Well, anyway, the, this is a new dock on a piece of property that I don't think actually borders the pond, but they do have a deeded easement to use that roadway, private roadway or driveway. And they, now they want to install a brand-new dock, which is 50 foot in length, almost 47, 47 and a half foot in length. It would be the largest structure on Kunamesset Pond. Kunamesset Pond is really a beautiful pond. If we could all get in a boat and go around it today, I doubt you would see more than three docks on that entire pond. Most are very, very small and wooden in nature. There are dozens, literally dozens of kayakers that use Kunamesset Pond. Every, almost every one I know gets in their kayak from the shoreline and they use it. There's no disruption in that regard. So the need for something of this magnitude is totally out of scale with the, with what Kunamesset Pond represents and the need for it. There certainly other places might have a floating dock, but they pull it in in the wintertime. It's unobtrusive, it's made out of wood. But in this particular case, this is a metal structure that's going to, I think, take away a little bit of the beauty of the pond. And this, now this gentleman has two docks, same construction, one 24 feet, now one almost 50 feet. And it's totally, it's totally new to Kunamesset Pond. There's nothing else like it on the pond. So what we're doing is basically saying, yeah, go ahead and do it, and who knows where we could go from there. It's just, we have a, we have a gem in Falmouth in Kunamesset Pond, and a number of people are against something of this size. That's my comment.
Okay. I think what we're up against, though, is, as Mr. Patterson has pointed out, yes, you're welcome to speak again.
I think Mr. Arment.
Oh, did you want to speak first?
I'd like to invite Mr. Arment to speak, but, yeah, I mean, the Kunamesset Pond communities is changing, I mean, like all communities, you know, changes over time. And at one time, it was full of speedboats and water skiers and all, and now it's, it's quiet and, and really utilized primarily for sailing and canoeing, which I applaud. I mean, we're, we're really not trying to do anything persuasive here. We're trying to work within the rules, which the Conservation Commission, you know, sets forth. And within the context of materials that are common to the, you know, this point in time, you know, and durable. And, and it's not, they're not all metal. It's, the decking on these docks will be wood. And every component that can be wood will be wood. It would all be wood if I, if it means, if it's practical. So, Mr. Arment, do you want to speak?
Good evening. As you know, I'm Bob Arment. I'm a Falmouth attorney, but I'm not representing Dan. I'm interested in this matter because, as you know, I am almost a butter. I own a property at 115 Adamassett, and it's not much more than a stone's throw from this property. I'm intimately familiar with the property, the rights that go along with it. I represented the Dupee family regarding all of Adamassett for 25 years. I drafted all of the documents that conveyed rights to use the, the water and so on to install a dock. In fact, Dan and Chris own the property in question. Their ownership goes to the water. It is the other properties that have an easement over, over the way, but under Massachusetts law, if their lot abuts the way that goes past their lot, they own the way if there's no butter on the other side. They actually own to the water, they're putting this dock on their own property. And the deeds, deed to their property and to abutting property specifically reserved the rights for them to do so. I think, as Dan said, all of the direct neighbors, I believe, have no objection to this. I have canoed on Kunamesset Pond probably 100 times over the last three years. And I cannot begin to tell you how wonderful it is, how wonderful a pond it is. If I thought that this dock, with its low profile, because this isn't tidal, it doesn't have to be up above where water could go if it was tidal, it's a low-profile structure located, I measured today on the town's website measuring device, more than 2,000 feet from the closest residents at Lockstead. I didn't think to measure the, in the other direction because it's so far away. The only people who will have any impact on this dock, which by itself will be quiet, would be people canoeing or kayaking by. And I've thought about this, and I simply think that the ability of the homeowner to enjoy the pond and to have a dock that's really necessary for it, and in this particular case, it really is necessary because of the topography, the steep hill that goes up from the, immediately from the driveway that goes right along the water. I think that the benefit of that to the homeowner outweighs what is a truly minimal impact of anybody go canoeing by or kayaking by. So I'm fully in support of this, and I know the other immediate neighbors are, I don't think that the aesthetics, and that's all we're talking about here, apparently, I haven't seen the letters from the neighbors. I don't think they outweigh the, the need to have this dock for this property. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for some of your clarifications as well.
Mark Fineran, it sounds to me like the applicant has jumped through all the hoops. And further, it sounds like many of the other docks wouldn't be permissible today as they are in their present condition because they scour the edge of the pond. And I, I think it would be totally wrong to deny this man his dock if he is completely compliant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just wanted to tell you something that I forgot to tell you, and that is that there are at least, because I can think of them, at least six and probably eight docks on the pond at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment for or against this application?
I would move that we close the hearing. Second.
All those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve this dock as before us?
I'll move.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I guess reluctantly, I would have to vote yes, too. I mean, we did get a lot of comments, but it doesn't change the property owner's rights or the process for approval, so.
Right.
It's our decision. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing for alteration of the license premises of an all-alcoholic common victual license Shipwreck LLC at 263 Grand Ave, Falmouth.
And the notice was published to address the issue that the chair just raised, and it indicated that a hearing would be held, Suckboard Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, February 14th, 2022, at 7:30 PM. And that was published the 4th of February in the Falmouth Enterprise.
Welcome, Mr. Flower.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Attorney Flower, excuse me.
That's okay.
He's a mister, too.
I've been called a lot worse than both of those things, so it's okay. No place I'd rather be on New Year's, Valentine's night than here with you guys.
Or New Year's.
Or New Year's.
Or Christmas Eve.
Well, let's see, last week was my wife's birthday and on the 8th, and I had planning board, and I'm here tonight on Valentine's, so I think the town of Falmouth is conspiring to ruin my, my marriage.
But we won't be here on New Year's Eve, okay?
For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I am an attorney here in Falmouth, and I'm representing Shipwreck LLC, the owner of the restaurant at 263 and 269 Grand Ave. I'm joined tonight by Rob Lowen, who is the manager of record for that license. This property was purchased from the British Beer Company a little less than a year ago. The restaurant in, in the parking area in the rear were all bought together, owned under the same umbrella. It operated as shipwrecked last season. The space was overhauled, the atmosphere was changed pretty dramatically. And under the COVID allowance, they incorporated some of the outdoor space between the restaurant and the hotel, which was incredibly popular with their patrons. And they're here tonight seeking to make that change permanent. There's no change proposed to the overall number of seats. Seats from inside will be taken outside as weather and, as weather permits. Per the board guidelines, we reached out to the planning board, zoning board, building department, and the fire department. None had any concerns relative to this request for alteration. And the ZBA even issued a modification of the special permit which would allow that. We have submitted a covenant as requested by the town that for licensing purposes, this would be treated as one property. And as I said, the seating remained the same. I think it's ironic that, you know, I think we're the town with the second-longest coastline in the state, but we actually have a shockingly low number of options for dining, either water view or even lesser outdoor dining near the water. I, I think, my opinion, that also, I have to say, but I do believe it, is that this is a great addition to the town. I think it really changed the atmosphere of the restaurant. I think it was a really nice addition. As someone who spends entire days at Falmouth Heights Park on Saturdays in the fall, I've really enjoyed having a place to go and have a bite between soccer games. I believe that this board can and should approve this, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
I would note that we did receive a lot of correspondence in favor of this application, and only one mentioned that there was a concern about music playing after 11:00 PM.
Well, I think, I think any approval can be conditioned that they have to have any outdoor music turned off at that point. I think they will as a matter of course. And to the extent that it hasn't, that was certainly an oversight and can be corrected moving forward.
Okay. And I just wanted to reaffirm that I think the approval we gave for outdoor music was acoustic. Is that not correct, Mr. Lowen?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So we want to just make a note of that on this decision, if, if it's a favorable decision. Is there any comments or questions from the board?
No.
I think the packet was very informative, and given the large amount of public support, I think we're probably in good shape.
I'll move we close the hearing.
Public comment? Is there any public comment regarding this application? Yes, sir.
Mark Fineran, I live around the corner, and I commented on this before. It seems when they first came in looking for their entertainment license, the town or the board chose to paint them with the same brush as the Black Dog in the complaints of loud outdoor music. But in the case of the Black Dog, they were not denied acoustical amplification. They were given a, a noise level. And I remember that the manager of the Black Dog was out there constantly on Sunday afternoons with his decibel meter, making sure that they were in compliance. And those things were done because there were numerous complaints. I know Rob very well. I mean, he's a fantastic manager. I grew up in this business and I worked in bars and restaurants. And I think that this amplification puts an undue burden upon them, and I think it should be saved for perhaps future complaints. I just see how, I do not see how this is fair or equitable in any fashion, and I don't understand why it was applied to them and strictly them and nowhere else in town initially. And if I could get a little clarification on that at least.
We actually, yeah, we actually did get a lot of complaints. And I will be candid, it was some of the same folks who had complained about the Black Dog, but were complaining pretty early on. And I think, I think when you came back the second time, Rob, we, or maybe we had you come in to talk about that, but, and, and we haven't really gotten any complaints, many complaints since, I don't think. So whatever, I don't know if you like switch, you know, turn the speakers or whatever, or turn the bodies, I don't know. But we did, in fact, get a lot of complaints, and then that has since, I think, been pretty much resolved. We haven't had many.
Because, like, on a, on a windy Sunday afternoon, you know, you can't hear a, a thing, even if you're inside that area. And, you know, I, I think the no amplification is, is too, too strict a measure when they could approach it in, in a reasonable fashion and try to keep the neighborhood happy. And I mean, just, just think back to the casino and, you know, I mean, they get permits to have bands out in the, in the middle of the ball field. It, it just doesn't seem equitable to me.
Well, I will say that we're going to be having a lot of restaurants likely coming back before us for outdoor dining and outdoor entertainment. And we have another application here this evening, or I don't know if it's on for tonight, but where it's also outdoor music proposed, and it's proposed to be acoustic only. And so it may be a coming trend that that might be more of the standard for these outdoor dining facilities. If it doesn't work, they can come back and ask for a modification if needed.
But I mean, it seems like, you know, they're doing that on, of their own volition, but it seems to me that you're kind of putting the cart before the horse, you know.
Well, they have it in there.
Just my opinion. And as I mentioned the last time I was here, I'm free to go out on my front porch around the corner and, and play with amplification. My neighbor does the same. So how can they be given further restriction than anyone else in the neighborhood? It, it just doesn't seem fair.
It was a condition that they offered in their application, and we were happy to see it.
I wouldn't have offered it.
Okay.
Well, I don't disagree with Mr. Fineran's general premise. We're not requesting a modification of that at this time. I think it's not off the table that we might come back and request that at some point, which, at which time I think that's a perfectly reasonable discussion. But we're only really concerned with the alteration of the premises at the moment.
Right. Okay. Any more public comment? And a motion to close the hearing?
I move to close the hearing. Second.
All those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
I was going to say, I would move approval. Again, another situation where I think it was well-presented and, you know, we have a good history with these folks, and the amplification is a good example where there was some concern and you guys responded to it. So, you know, that always is a good faith type of relationship to have with the town, so.
Second.
Who's the second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
And next we have a COVID update from our health agent, Scott McGann. See, you're still wearing the mask, so I guess I'm going to guess what the board health came up with.
Just called being smart.
Yeah, I would have ran through here and lighted it on fire and ran it off. Excuse me one second. I need the, I need the PowerPoint that way it can help show, show it better. So here's our weekly case count trend. You can see on the far right where, you know, how quickly Omicron came and went. It came as just as fast as it went. And orange is what we have for this week, so 11.
Well.
Yeah.
It came as just as fast as it went. And orange is what we have for this week, so eleven since Thursday afternoon. Isn't that awesome?
Yeah.
So Omicron kind of went and came, and what's it gonna do in the future? I wouldn't kid a bit. But, you know, we'll take it where we're at, where we're at right now, so. We had a pretty good, like I say, a pretty good week. County looks the same. You see the sort of same up and down, sort of trend with the county as well. Over here where we have the incidence rate, now this is what number of daily cases Falmouth would have, or any of these towns would have if they had a hundred thousand people in the town. That way it makes Dennis, Yarmouth, Boston all look the same, okay? It's high because, and the reason why these next two numbers will be high is, can you see my cursor circling? It's capturing these weeks. So there's a little delay when the state posts it. It's the two previous full weeks. So next week on Thursday, it's gonna gather these two, so the numbers is only going down. So then when, you'll see numbers that are still high of forty-two, still sort of middle of the road. I think we do fairly well, all things considered, with the big population that we have. And our positivity is still high at eight. Again, those two will be probably cut by half by the time we next week or two for our actual numbers. The hospitalizations look fairly good. It's five and one, which is sort of where we are when we're in sort of a case count around thirty to fifty. That's been sort of normal with that. And so we've definitely seen that numbers dropped from as high as, on the twentieth was over seventy people between the two hospitals. You're at thirty people, so you've cut it over half. Vaccination-wise, they're then going good. Ninety-six percent of all eligible residents had at least one dose, and eighty-four fully vaccinated. That's a viable eligible population, which is just under thirty thousand eligible people. So we're making a little bit of gains. Those two hundred and sixty-eight doses that week, it's down from about four hundred and something the week before. There's plenty of availability. I haven't run any clinics lately because it's really easy to get if you want one. You can get one right on vaxfinder dot mass dot gov, and it's pretty easy to get a, your first vax, your booster, your first, your second, or your booster. And then thirdly, this is what you brought in, so it is January eleventh, we have a face covering requirement in town-owned properties. The board health didn't make any decision. They figured to wait a little, maybe a little bit longer in their next meeting to discuss it, just because it's come down relatively quickly. That was their point. So they didn't make any recommendations for you on that. And if you don't know, that the DESI, which is the Department of Early and Secondary Education in the EEC, which is for daycare centers that are licensed, are lifting their mask requirements for K through twelve and licensed J cares on the twenty-eighth. And communities can establish their own local requirement, which I believe is gonna be discussed tomorrow at the school committee meeting, so. So that's really all I have for an update. If you guys have any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, the records availability for your vaccination status.
Yep.
I've tried, and I can't get any records, even though I've had.
From the state?
From the state, yeah. Do you have any experience to share?
I've heard the same. I've heard some say they've had trouble. Maybe what you want to look at is somehow if you, if it was done online and somebody did it manually and left a spate. The problem is, is that the computer maybe, there might have been a space or some sort of thing the way it was. I've heard some of that. Have you called? You can call that. There's a number you can call on there too as well. I try calling and try to get, you know, a human to come down and help you figure that out.
Thanks.
But I have heard some people having trouble. Maybe it's the way you had your name, you know, the person that filled out the form. So you're getting it third-hand. So you tell the person what your name is on a card. They now get the card, and they look at it, and they said, okay, I think it's spelt this way, and they might put it in wrong. Hopefully, they have multiple ways of looking that up. I think you just need to talk to a person.
Any other questions?
I appreciate your efficiency. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
I just hope people are kind tomorrow at the school committee meeting. Everybody is just trying to do their best. No one has any answers. Nobody wants to make people wear masks if they don't have to, but nobody wants to be responsible for kids getting sick. So everybody is trying their best. I just hope that we are kind and civil, because I know in other communities that are having this conversation, that hasn't always been the case. So there are volunteers at the school committee, and they're there because they really care about our schools and our kids. So I hope that we just treat them that way, whatever our position is.
Just keep in mind that no guff policy.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
All right, welcome. Is Cape Cod Commission representatives here for the complete streets? Welcome. Glaflin, hello?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. James McLaughlin, town engineer. And I'm here with Colleen Maderos from the Cape Cod Commission. She's been working for the town preparing our complete streets prioritization plan and report. That's the second tier of the complete streets program with Mass DOT. Once we're past this tier, the third tier is the one where we're eligible for grants. So submission of this plan is due by April first, and we're hoping to get it in before then. And once it's approved by Mass DOT, as I said, we'll be available to move on to tier three of the complete streets program. So I'd like to turn it over to Colleen. We've been working on this for quite some time, just to go over. So if you don't want to hear Colleen.
Thank you.
Right, you can.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Colleen Maderos. I'm a transportation program manager at the Cape Cod Commission. And I was before this board, a little over a year ago, when we kicked off this study. So I'm just here to bring you an update. We had our second public meeting last month on January nineteenth. So I'm just gonna give a little bit of an overview. I encourage you to go, this is our webpage, hosted on our website, so you can find all the information up to date about this project. As you can see, we have the recording of the public meetings, because they've been in a virtual format. But really, what I want to point out is this project viewer tonight. And this, this has all of the data that we see, and it's kind of a collection of where we've come. And you can learn more if you're, this is something new you haven't heard yet. But a complete street is something for all modes of travel. So we're looking incorporating for pedestrians, bicyclists, transit users, in all ages. And this is something, you know, you can see something in Boston, what it might look like, may probably be different here on Cape Cod, but it's still just the notion of, you know, improving our streets for walkability and bikability. There's many benefits associated with having our streets be able to be walkable and bikeable, as you can see. And this all stems from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation made available this funding program. They are pushing complete streets statewide, and they know it's a very difficult conversation with municipalities with limited funding. So they provided this opportunity, and it's a grant funding program for municipalities to seek up to four hundred thousand dollars in grant funds to construct a potential project. So as, there's three tiers. Tier one is developing and approving a policy, which this board did at the end of December of twenty twenty. And then tier two, we're in right now, is developing a prioritization plan. So this is a list of projects that the town is interested in completing, and that'll be submitted to the state before April first of this year to, for them to review and allow any of, any of those projects on that list to be eligible for this grant funding. It doesn't necessarily have to go in numerical order from one to ten, or however many projects it is. It's really, it allows flexibility as, you know, projects arise, to see really what might, what the town might wanna to complete. So that's the tier three for four hundred thousand dollars.
That four hundred thousand total for the whole project? There's no, not a yearly?
It's every three years, you may seek up another four hundred thousand dollars. But currently, only the town of Sandwich has applied, and they were awarded a sidewalk project for Sandy Neck Road. And they didn't quite needed the full four hundred, but they could seek another project. So it doesn't have to be one. It can be several. And as simple as speed feedback signs, it doesn't have to be a major project, so something to keep in mind. Prioritization plan, this is where we're at, you know, I'll go over this kind of timeline. One thing to point out with this is state highway roads, state-owned roadways are not eligible. So the state is kind of looking at that as with their own program. So this really wants to focus the towns on their town-owned roads. And we did a public outreach effort as part of this to really have the public weigh in on where their local issues might be. And we based it off of several studies that have been done in town, so this is not in a silo. We have the bike plan, the Route twenty-eight Main Street Transportation Master Plan, several other documents, safety studies. The bike plan, we've definitely looked at that, and several, majority of all these are included in the priority list, as well as these ongoing design projects. These are mainly intersection projects that the DPW's underway as well. And then I'll go into a little bit more on the prioritization plan, but it basically has a list of projects, and then we evaluate them and rank them. So we do have a ranking, again, but the ranking doesn't need to be followed strictly. Types of projects range from pedestrians and bicycles, as well as you can look at safety at intersections, just to make them safer for all users, with traffic calming. Again, they don't need to be large infrastructure improvements. A lot of them are. But there are some opportunities just to improve crosswalks, improve roads by changing the striping or adding the missing signage to really alert motorists. So we had a public meeting last year where we showed existing conditions, and this is something you can play with. This is the data we look at. So we have layers for, to show where there are sidewalks in town in blue. We have, you know, local activity centers and destinations. This is obviously Main Street, so it's a busy area. As well as these other little layers, we can show you, these are all the pedestrian and bicycle-related crashes in town, as well as the roadway volumes refer to different coloring schemes. So you can really look and see where are some difficult and challenging areas in town. And then at next up here, we have the public suggestions. So this was our first public meeting in virtual format, which actually, I think was successful, allowed us to get over three hundred potential projects in town. So it was a lot for us to sift through, but it's a good problem. So we got a lot of great ideas. This was from the public. It was open for a month. And it refers to, you can see here in layers, right here. Blue is bicycle, red's pedestrian, orange vehicle. So you could either draw a line, whether it's a sidewalk desired connection, or a dot, maybe more of a crosswalk, or a traffic signal that needed to be updated. So this is now closed, but this was a little public comment tool where you can put in your location and say, we'd like to install a multi-use path right here.
Is there any chance of extending that public comment period since we're presenting it here tonight?
We're in a second public comment period right now. Yep, so in the summer, we also heard feedback about looking at, you know, really, what do we want to prioritize in town? So we did a public survey in the summer and trying to get a feel for, you know, we had over three hundred responses to that, but the evaluation criteria. So what is a priority in town? A lot of what we heard was connecting schools, walkability of schools, and other desirable areas such as beaches make sense to prioritize. Looking at crosswalks and shared use paths were important areas. So we, this is just the, you can peruse the results here as well. But again, we're, we used this information to develop the evaluation criteria, which helped get to the ranking of the projects. And so now we, this is where we're at with, in cooperation with the town. This isn't, you know, this is for the town to work in the future. So this is based on with town staff coordination. We've narrowed it down to fifty projects from that three hundred. And you can see where they are laid out in town, and can click on them for more information. But this greatly shows, you know, we're looking to spread it out amongst the villages as well. And in here, you can see this little bookmark tab has the fifty locations. So if you want to see, so we have Curly Boulevard in North Falmouth, it'll bring you right there. So you can see the project itself, and then you can click on it and get a little description on what that potential project might include. So this one would be more of a shorter-term project to restripe the roadway, because there's a lot of extra space to really narrow down the lanes, potentially stripe bike lanes, so not necessarily a major infrastructure project. So that's one of them, as well as we have some longer term. So a shared use path construction along Brick Hill Road. We also included a lot of the intersection projects and things that are already working on in town. But you'll see, every school has a project associated with it. If it's not named directly, it's because, you know, a lot of our schools here in the downtown will be already associated with the Catherine Lee Bates necessarily, so that will improve walkability to Mullin and Lawrence. But then we also make sure we have something for the high school up at Gifford and Brick Hill Road, some signal, pedestrian signal improvements there, as well as, this is at T Ticket on Mayor Vista Ave. So looking at, making sure those crosswalks are ideally located, and with any safety improvements, maybe a beacon might be needed, or relocating or consolidating the crosswalks. So each elementary school should, is included as well. You can see here, as well as there's some sidewalks that just need to be improved in town. They're substandard, whether it's width or condition, as well as providing missing gaps. A capesca right here is one. This one's updating the sidewalk, but there might be some gaps as well. So this is something you can look at to really see where those fifty top priorities were. And right now, we're seeking feedback on that, so that our last public meeting was January nineteenth. So we're having a public comment period until Wednesday. And with that, we have a public survey out, which is this last tab here. Or you can email me as well. So this is a survey, and what it does, it does list all the fifty projects. You do not have to answer every question, so you may just provide the feedback on ones that you're most desirable, you know, to comment on. And really, what we want feedback on is, do we have the ranking, how we have the ranking? Is it, you know, just right? You think this is a higher priority or a lower priority? So we're getting feedback currently on this. I looked this afternoon. We have over two hundred responses right now, plus several. I'm getting emails as well. So we'll be going through all of those, as well as, there's been an opportunity, you know, you can add in here maybe a specific element you would like the project to highlight, whether it's traffic calming, things like that, or lighting. So you have the ability to write a little bit more here. There's also a general comment box at the end as well, because in case you feel a project that's not listed on the party plan, you would like to put it on there as well. But generally, we don't want to go past fifty. That's kind of the rule of thumb MassDOT's looking for, because fifty's a lot for the town already to tackle. So one other point is, when you get towards forty, we have, we did include several on the state roads, so Route twenty-eight and twenty-eight A. Because we heard the feedback on those, there's some challenging areas in those sections, twenty-eight and twenty-eight A at one fifty-one, for example. So we did include those, although they're not eligible, so at the same time, it's, it's one thing, but if it's, if it's strong enough that it should be on there, I wanted to make sure at this phase that the people to see it, because there were comments on that, we could remove those. Or if it's, you know, it doesn't hurt, I guess, also to alert the state that there is interest at the local level as well. But unfortunately, those will take a little bit of a different approach to improve those conditions. And so as Jim said, the next steps really are, April first is the deadline to get this prioritization plan. It's a, it's a big MassDOT spreadsheet that we're working with the town, has several elements. Looks at equity. It looks at where schools are located, as well as some other detailed information. So we would like, we are aiming to get that in before April first to allow the town to seek the tier three construction grant, which happens twice a year. So May first and October first is when applications are due for, to seek if they would like to obtain construction funds for any of the projects on these priority plan. So happy to answer questions.
So this is the public comment period that I was wondering about extending. So it's ending on Wednesday?
Yes.
So you have through the day on Wednesday to comment?
Yep.
Okay, and I guess you're under kind of a pressure on a timeline to get done by April. You probably don't really want to extend it.
If we don't meet the April deadline, it will go to September first is the next opportunity where MassDOT would approve it. So you would, you would be waiting for a fall construction application.
Okay, and with two hundred comments already, I guess, it's been out there pretty well. I have comments and questions from the board first?
Could you just remind people where to find the survey?
Sure. So on the Cape Cod Commission's website, you can find it under. So on Cape Cod Commission's website, you can find it under transportation. But really, if you just Google found the complete streets, it'll come up and you'll see a Cape Cod Commission website associated with it. But oops. So under Cape Cod Commission, you can go under our work right here, under transportation. This is where we have live, all of our projects live. And you'll scroll down the projects and you'll see we're currently doing this in Born as well concurrently. We already finished up Eastham, Orleans. We're step, working on Brewster and Barnstable next, in the next year as well. So this is something, it's going to be a competitive program, but it's not going away actually. So Mast Dot is supporting with additional funds with all the new infrastructure money coming, so.
So I have one question about the, a lot of the roadways, we're proposing shared use paths and that's great, but isn't that much more difficult to implement than just bike sharrows?
Yeah, sharrows are simply striping, but it doesn't provide, it's a different type of facility, so it's not a safe. And sharrows are only applicable on a low volume and a lower speed roadway. So Brick Hill Road would not be kind of an acceptable roadway for that condition just because if you have too many volumes as well. Whereas we propose sharrows on Sippawissett Road. That's more of a road where share the road, less conflicts for vehicles. So there are opportunities on some roads, but you're, what we've heard too from the bike committee is, you know, looking at that east-west connection in town. We have the Great Shining Sea, which is that north sound, but north-south, but trying to get people to the bike facility is also looking at, you know, incorporating east-west connections. So that's where the shared use path kind of came from. And then allowing different ages and abilities is also look at part of this program. So some people are very comfortable in the road, whereas others are not. And looking at that, getting to schools and parks and beaches is, you know, all ages and abilities.
Okay. So now I've noticed my, my personal pet peeve was the Thomas Landers Road because I travel it almost every day and I see avid bikers, you know, with the biker suits and the helmets. And they're on Thomas Landers Road and it's a very dangerous road. And I thought it would be, maybe wise to just at least widen it two feet or whatever we can get in a compromise kind of a way, just for a temporary fix until that shared use path can be engineered and designed. Because I'm picturing that if we accept the shared use path as the fix for that road, I just feel like it's not going to happen for so many years that it's just going to be a dream that we might never get to. And when we think about prioritizing, that's why I asked about the sharrows. And I don't mean just painting, but actually widening the roadway to provide a little bike lane on each side because the people are already there. And I just see this as an accident waiting to happen with all the cement trucks and all the big vehicles on that road traveling at a relatively high speed. So is there any kind of a compromise that we can do with a temporary condition or is that just excluded because of the roadway conditions and we have to do the shared use path?
No, it's up to the town, I guess. You know, you would have to widen the roadway as that has a cost associated with it too and the feasibility of that. So it's tough because widening the road also does increase speed. But I think that's something, it doesn't necessarily, we could look at as a short, the town could, to say there's short-term and a long-term goal for Thomas Landers and Brick Hill. But maybe that's something that could be done, you know, as a repave, with a repaving project as well. But they could certainly apply for funds that would be eligible, an eligible item if they would like to cover that cost for the widening associated, but not necessarily the whole paving of, you know, it'd be a cost sharing.
Right.
We can, if there's a few projects like that, you know, we can bring that back to town, town staff and relay that information because this, again, this is the document, you know, you can update it, it's not, this is not the end. So as town needs change, you know, you could focus on Thomas Landers with this and then maybe look, go to Plan B when you're ready for the larger one.
Good to know there's some flexibility there, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No, this is such an amazing tool.
Incredible tool.
Great opportunity. Thank you very much for presenting that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
And next we have presentation of petition articles for April 2022 Annual Town Meeting. And the order we have here is Article 23 with Victoria Lowell. Ms. Lowell here, yes, welcome.
Bless you.
Schedule number for five minutes. If you need a little more time, you can, you can ask us.
It's okay to be unmasked. I can talk better that way. Let's see, I'm supposed to be able to use the mouse and find here, whoops. It's supposed to come up. Yes. And then I go to here. Okay, start. I'm Victoria Lowell, Vicki Lowell of Precinct One, Town Meeting Member. And several people have asked me, well, why did you file an article about erosion and paths at the Punch Bowl? And so I, I, I think you have in your packet a explanation of why I filed this article. And it's, actually I wrote the memo on October 5th and I was hopeful at that time that maybe I would light a fire under the Conservation Commission and I wouldn't have to file an article, but fires, maybe I've started a smolder, but it isn't a fire yet. Beebe Woods comes under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission ever since Josiah Lilly gave it to the town in 1976. And in 2004, the Conservation Commission decided they should have a, some kind of a management plan for the woods and they asked for volunteers to help write the, you know, come up with the plan. So since I've been active in town and lived right next to the woods, I volunteered and I ended up being chair of the group that, that worked on coming up with a plan. And we, by the fall of 2006, we submitted a plan to the Conservation Commission and lots of issues were discussed, but erosion was a major one. And we pointed out that the erosion at the Punch Bowl was already pretty bad and it was only going to get worse and maybe they should have a plan to deal with it. It's really bad. That's, I can show you a few more photos. I have, I took the time. And these are actually taken by Ellison Leshen. But it's all a very steep slope and this is, that's like a two or three foot drop. And if you're a nimble kid, you might go down there without a worry. But if you're anybody not a nimble child, you might have a problem. So, so I've been stewing for 15 years, hoping that somebody would take this cause up and actually get something done. And in the meantime, it's gotten really, really hazardous. If I can figure out how to use the map. How do I go back? Well, yeah, that's the next one. That's another one. There's just a few there. Oops, must've gone too far. I don't know how I go back now there. Okay, well anyhow, you get the idea. So I just think that Mr. Lilly gave the land to the town. It's a natural park. It's, it's not a formal park, but it's a natural park. It's heavily used by walkers, people walking with dogs, a few bikes and a few horses, but, and the Punch Bowl is one of the prized destinations. It's iconic. I mean, George Moses wrote a whole book, Ring Around the Punch Bowl. And so I think you can't wall people off from wanting to go to the shore of the Punch Bowl. So we just need to put our heads together and get a design together and go ahead and figure out a way to make a safe access. So that's the purpose of my article. I know the Finance Committee is not going to recommend it at this point and I accept that. I was hoping, I've gotten a lot of cooperation from Mark Casper, the town, who does land managing, but it's just not far enough along to be able to estimate a reasonable budget for, and design for doing the work. So it's going to be, I, I think I have an understanding that it will be come before Town Meeting in the fall and November with a, as part of a capital plan. I, you know, I don't have a, it's not a personal thing with me, except that I was part of this group, which included Bob Amen, who was here before and other people. And I, I just want to make sure it gets done while I can still appreciate the fund. So that's, that's why I'm here and I, I thank everybody who's, all of you for doing what you do. But as I say, I, I'm going to keep, I'm from the, I'm on the outside, so I can only push so much, but I'm going to try, try to keep this alive and get access to the Punch Bowl safe. There's also a problem at Ice House Pond, but that's just, it's not as dangerous because at Punch Bowl, the slope starts way up, it's very steep. And if you don't do it right, it's just going to re-erode. Some Eagle Scout made some wonderful steps down one of the access points, but they've, it's so eroded around those rocks, I, I'd fear from my, it's like one and a half foot drop-offs around these little rocks. So you, you know, it's, it's not working anymore. So I think you've probably heard enough of me, but I'm not going to go away and I hope, I'm looking forward to having a good plan to fix this that will last for a long time. And also I think the town, we have a land manager now, but it gets a lot of cooperation from the DPW. There's no complaints about that, but the DPW has their own issue, you know, own projects, their own limits on personnel. And so they can't do big proj, they can probably help with a project like this, but they'd have to have a special budget and to do this kind of work too, so.
You might need a grant and a contractor to really deal with this.
Yeah, we, well, Jim Grady went out to look at it and, and just to see what kind of equipment they could even get in there. But there's so far, there hasn't, we haven't gotten to that, whether it's going to be a soft design or where you actually need some kind of steps like they have at Shiverick Pond. It's, that's all in the future, I guess, but.
Are some other safety concerns? I think we need a management plan for Beebe Woods, actually. I've been thinking that for a while, so thank you for bringing this up.
Yeah, well, here's my.
Yeah, good.
Actually, I shouldn't say this, but I read it over and it's really well done.
Okay.
Should say it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Victoria.
And next we have Patricia Johnson with Article 24.
I don't know if you have, did you all get a pack? You have this in your packet?
Yes, we do.
Oh, I'll take this down. I'll take my mask off. And can I put a thing up here?
Yes.
Is it on?
Did you, did you submit it?
Submit it? Or did you bring it on a?
I brought it on a piece of paper.
No, can't get that up there.
Then we'll just go with it. Okay. My name is Patricia Johnson. I live in North Falmouth. I'm, I'm sort of like Vicki. I've been agitated about the noisiness of leaf blowers. And I had two episodes fairly close together where I was at my kitchen sink and I have a decibel level reader on my iPhone because I used to do it with the speedboats out in the bay. And I'm, so I took a decibel reading in my kitchen sink, doors, windows closed, and it came over 80 decibels. And I said, this is ridiculous. We've got to do something about it. Then about two or three days later, I went to dinner outside picnic at somebody's house on a Friday night at 5:00 PM, 6:00 PM, and there were leaf blowers, absolutely deafening, deafening sounds and one, one a butter and then that one, that a butter goes down and then on the other side of the house, another one. And both of them were well over 80 decibel levels. So I said, well, I might as well do something about this. And then I began looking and this, and I came up with the three towns in Massachusetts that had already voted and installed leaf blower regulations. And then I read some more. California, they've established no electric lawn equipment, no gas-powered lawn equipment can be sold in the state of California. And many towns in California had established a complete ban on gas-powered leaf blowers in the 1990s. I mean, you can see it online in towns, many towns in California have taken it upon themselves to establish limitations on glass, gas mower hours. And this, my proposed petition is not to ban leaf blowers. It's not that. It's, it's a first step in trying to get reasonable regulations for their usage in such, such as the time of day you can use leaf blowers and the time of year. It is a gradual phase in such a time, so that landscapers have time to convert to electric leaf blowers that are quieter and then, and many studies say they don't take more time to do the job. They are healthier for the operators and for the environment. I know that a leaf blower study committee can be proposed to work out the details, including enforcement and present a bylaw for the vote of a future town meeting. Several towns, I told you, have already adopted reservation, regulations, including Burke Line, Newton and Lincoln. And Lexington has a vote, town-wide vote coming up in about two weeks. And that's what I'll have said.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Johnson?
I have a question on number six. It says electric and battery leaf blowers can be used all year, including Sundays and legal holidays. Is it assumed that the battery and electric leaf blowers are all under 67 decibels? Do they come standard below that?
Yes, I think that's a fairly common number.
Okay. And you mentioned management, who would oversee the regulations and make sure people are compliant with that?
That's something that will have to be decided.
Okay.
I mean, this is sort of like a, a step. It's stepping out and saying, we're going to do this. It's a good idea. And the state is even, has a bill before the legislature right now that has financial payments to people who get rid of their gas leaf blowers and, yeah, landscapers or whatever.
So if businesses wanted to convert or needed to convert over, there's potentially some financial benefits for them to do that?
If this, if the legislature adopted that law or decided to fund it, let's put it that way, yes. There's a tremendous amount of people trying to do this. It's so much better for the environment not to have gas-powered equipment.
Thank you.
I read a study that said that the reason they banned, banned the two-cycle engines in California was because of the pollution rather than the noise.
That's correct.
They came to realize that the two-cycle motors used for landscaping were polluting more than all the cars in California.
That's right.
Pretty amazing. Thank you for bringing that up. If there's no further questions, we'll move on. The next article is petition Article 25 with Courtney Bird of Falmouth Net. Welcome.
Hi, I'm, I'm Art Giallo from Falmouth Net. If I may, I'd just like to make a quick comment about the previous article, which is, you know.
Coming off your time.
Okay. I, you know, I live near Woodrise and I, I hear three to four hours a week of multiple commercial-grade leaf blowers making noises.
But this is not an opportunity for public to comment.
Sorry.
Please, Art.
So this first, this article is basically fairly So this first, this article is basically fairly simple, I didn't prepare anything here, because it is the second vote of two, as required by Massachusetts General Law 164 to establish the municipal light plant. And the wording is essentially the same as the first article, with the exception of a mention that this is the second, the second vote. So with that, I mean, unless there's questions, I really don't have anything additional to say.
And do you want to comment on Article 26 while we're here?
Sure. And Article 26 is for the establishment of a municipal light board. This would be a, a board to oversee the operations and management of the light plant. And again, there's, using guidance from Section 55 of Chapter 164, which says that the light plant, the light board should be either three or five people. We recommend five in this, to, to bring more balance and greater representation, and that the initial terms would be staggered between one, three, and, one, two, and three years, with subsequent terms being three years each.
We have received some comments from some folks that would like to see more clarity in Article 26 to specify that it will be for broadband only and not to be used as an electric utility. Have you given any thought to that? I don't know if you've heard any of those comments.
Right, I, I have heard some of those comments. I think the, the thing is that the, the board, light plant board can only take action with approval of the town. This is not an open, you know, do anything you want. I would suggest that the town does not want to a priori, you know, limit its options for things that may occur, you know, far into the future, far into the future. The idea that, and people have spoken about, well, if you do this, the, once, Chapter 164 allows you to do an electric plant, or a gas plant, or something like that. Technically, that's true, however, nothing can be done without the approval of the town. And should town meetings see it in its wisdom to do something beyond broadband, it, it should be allowed to. It is certainly not the intent of, of Falmouth Net, which is basically an advocacy group for the, for broadband, to do anything beyond broadband.
Okay, maybe then you'll add an explanation to.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great thing to be in, in the explanation, but, you know, I would recommend, you know, the town limiting its ability to do things in the future.
Okay. Any other questions for?
Well, there's a blank in here, to be held blank, and I just didn't know whether you were going to fill that information in.
Yes, that would be, that was blank, basically, because we weren't sure exactly what the details would be. And the recommendation, I would say now, that that should be filled in for, as November, is it 8th?
Well, yeah, we're not sure if our, will be successful with our special legislation, so.
Right, but I think.
It is appropriate that it be, you know, to be determined. Maybe that should be what it says.
Okay, there should be something in there, but I didn't, I didn't know exactly how we, we would fill that in.
Could you not say the November 2022 state election?
Well, that's what I was suggesting, but.
If we're successful, but we don't know for sure.
Okay.
You could say potentially.
That's the answer.
Yeah, I think the answer is it shouldn't be blank.
Right, it shouldn't, I, I, I agree that it shouldn't be blank, but at the time we submitted this, I didn't know exactly how it should be filled in. And I think at town, I would suggest that we do it for the November, whatever date it is, November, I think it's November 8.
So is there time for final edit?
Well, the, the motion, the motion that would be acted on by town meeting would dictate exactly what would happen, as opposed to just the, the general language of the article. So we will clear, we will certainly get an opportunity to clarify that.
What I'm asking is, is if the petitioner wants to choose to put a date in there, is there still time for final edits? Or do we?
He's saying to the warrant book.
Yeah, or, or is it what we approved tonight? We're not really approving this, we're just acknowledging.
I think what's been filed is determined by the deadline that's come and gone.
Okay, that's what my question is.
Okay.
We're limited, we can't make any changes to that.
Okay, very good.
But on town meeting.
This could be amended at town meeting.
The motion you present at town meeting is what's going to control.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next we have Article 28 by Rosemary Carey.
I'm not quite sure where it goes.
Use it just, oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, I mean, I think you're going to put it right in there.
This one right here?
Everyone, it fits in? And then you're just going to use this? Is this yours right here?
Yeah.
I'm, I don't want to click which one.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Take a computer course if you want a petition in town.
I'm really sorry.
No hurt.
You're a woman of multiple thumb drives, how many do you have in your pockets there?
You know what? That's a good question.
Sorry, we don't have anybody here to help you with that. Peter Johnson's top is.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah. I kind of panicked when I didn't see him. So, fine, okay. I'm not getting a break.
Wonder if you need to close this one?
Once you close that one by accident, you know, the one that's there right now.
Yep.
Upper right. There you go.
Problem. Okay. Okay, I'll just have to speak through it. I'm really sorry about that. Okay.
Give it another try, I mean, not even nine yet, we're, we're doing pretty well.
No, I just, I don't understand. Anyway. I don't, I wouldn't know how to. Oh, there you go.
While you're working on that?
Can we do the consent agenda?
Well, let's go to Petition Article 29.
Okay.
Because we did have a, you can keep working on that. We did have a letter from Jordan asking us to, she wanted to withdraw, not that she can withdraw it, but just the fact that she'd come to realize that along those lines, I wanted to share with you, that when I submitted the above article, I did not fully understand how money allocation happens in our town, and I've since been informed that only a dollar amount can be allocated. This funding source would therefore have to be pursued differently should you choose to pursue it. Thank you very much for your support in this important aspect of our community. Unfortunately, we'll be out of town Monday the 14th, so I'll not be able to attend your meeting, and please feel free to reach out. So Jordan's kind of conceding that maybe we're not 100% ready for this.
You miss one.
We'll probably come back another time. And that's for Article 29, for consideration of funding using 25% of the local meal and restaurant tax to allocate to affordable housing. We'll probably revisit that in the future. Like you're getting there.
Sorry?
Can we do the consent agenda?
We can, is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody wants to hold?
No, it's okay. I'll just, I'll just talk to you. Okay.
I have a question about this, because the minutes are under the consent agenda, but we usually have edits of the minutes.
I have that.
So we'll hold those, maybe?
Yeah.
If no one has any questions, I would move approval of the items on the consent agenda, which are approve applications for entertainment license and Sunday entertainment, for Woho LLC DBA provisions, 87 Water Street, Unit 2, Woods Hole.
Yeah.
And then approve application for a change of manager, common victory license to stand located at 75 County Road, North Falmouth. And administrative orders, which was a vote, as Mr. Suso said, to allow Auto Camp to withdraw its application for a liquor license, and then vote to approve requests for waiver of the signed permit fee for St. Barnabas Church.
I do have a question about the Auto Camp one. If I could, just yourself?
I think we have a representative here tonight, actually.
Welcome.
Well, you want to hold that item?
Yeah, we'll wait, we'll hold that item. Okay.
And then the last one was retroactive authorization to submit grant application request to Cape Cod Commission for Recreation slash Open Space Plan Update and Economic Development Guide.
Second, for all those non, not held.
Okay, all those in favor of all the items non-held?
Hi.
Thank you. Hi, welcome, Rosemary.
Okay, thank you, sorry for that delay. I'm just going to talk through it with my old-school notes.
Very good, that's your dry run for town meeting. So after meeting, we'll go perfectly smooth, because this one, we'll have worked that out, so this is, this is the time to do that.
Okay, so, good evening Chairman Brown, Select Board members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Rosemary Dragger Carey from North Falmouth, a member of Falmouth Climate Action Network, Town Meeting and Energy Committee member, and a co-petitioner on Article 28 with Michael Fogarty, Eleanor Ling, David Mark Welch, Susan Richman, and Darryl Lynn Shad. We're here tonight to ask for your support for Article 28. The article asks the town to create a new full-time sustainability director or a similar level position charged with prioritizing and integrating sustainability and coastal resiliency policies into all town departments and committees. As you recall, in early December, Falcan requested that this position be created and funded in the 2023 budget, and this board recommended that a third-party consultant be done first to determine how that function would integrate within the town. We agree with that decision, and we all want this to be successful. With this article, we're asking the town meeting to vote for the establishment of the position and outline the next steps in the process. We want to ensure that sustainability remains a priority, and that steps are taken to ensure the position is ready to be filled, ready to go when the funding is available in FY24 or sooner. A positive town meeting vote would underscore the sense of urgency and help expedite the creation of the position. We crafted the article to allow for this board to process the third-party consultant's input and take, and for this board to take the appropriate actions. Why a sustainability director? Well, the, the climate crisis already poses a dire threat to health, the health, safety, and economic security of the people of Falmouth now and in future generations. It's critical that the town take meaningful action in the next few years. An experienced, dedicated sustainability professional would drive the sustainability agenda through the town's strategic planning, policies, and implementation. It would support staff and committees who have been directed to take action on climate, but may not have the time, expertise, or resources. Falcan arrived at this conclusion by looking at other Massachusetts towns. We've looked, either reached out or researched on websites, how sustainability positions are organized, and how they interact with other departments, and we submitted those findings to the Select Board on December 6. We found an overarching theme, that having a skilled, dedicated sustainability department or individual focused on climate is a very good investment for the town, leading to better coordination between departments and opportunities to secure grant funding. And action on climate has been a priority as a matter of policy for Falmouth ever since its comprehensive plan, local comprehensive plan, the climate action plan, and now it's a matter of law under the state climate roadmap. So the reasons to invest in a position whose sole focus is on climate are well-established. But adding to that urgency is that in the next few years, Massachusetts is expected to receive more than $9 billion from the Biden administrate, Biden infrastructure plan, and several billions more will be available to states and towns, and towns will be competing for those funds. So having a sustainability director in place will help Falmouth secure those grants and demonstrate that we have the capacity to implement the programs. We cannot continue to combat the climate crisis without a clear roadmap for action or a designated individual to implement it. The costs are too high and the time is of the essence. Support in the community is growing. We have been reaching out to organizations in town, faith groups, EDIC, number of groups have already expressed their support, and nearly 30 individuals so far have done so too. And we're going to keep doing outreach between now and town meeting as well, just to gauge interest in this process. So we hope that you will recommend that the town vote, Article 28 as printed, a dedicated sustainability director will enable us to implement the climate solutions that our town urgently needs for Falmouth residents now and for future generations. Thank you very much. Happy to answer questions.
You didn't need slides. Really great.
Any question?
No.
I have one question. You mentioned that the, your petitioner article, you feel works well with the system that we put in place to ask Mr. Suso to get a consultant to determine how that would be integrated into town policy. Can you tell me how those are working together? Because if we're just going ahead and creating this without definition.
Yes, well, here's where I did need slides. In the second paragraph of the petition article, it lays out the steps that need to be created. And we specifically crafted it so that there is enough time to receive and process that information from the consultant's study and take the appropriate actions. We think almost a full year is enough time.
Okay.
So, when you outline the steps, I think the way I read this was that that whole process and, and how these things would work would be guided by the consultant.
Thank you.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Good, just wanted to give you a chance to share that, thank you.
That's helpful.
I have a, a question about the, if, if this were to be passed, and it says that we create a new full-time position, would this be funded out of the operating budget for next year, or would the funding for this position come out of somewhere else? Or does it depend on the timing of all of these steps in the second paragraph?
I think it's very dependent on that, and it'll be, I think, dependent on what the consultant recommends. Consultant might recommend that this be a consultant position that's self-funded, rather than a town staff person. I don't know what they'll come up with as a recommendation, but I think that'll be part of what guides us in how the position is created.
But any position, if it's created and it's long-term, is going to have to be incorporated into our operating budget.
Okay, that's, that's my, yeah, that was my question. Thank you.
Just a little preview of your questions for town meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Rosemary.
And now, I guess we go back to the consent agenda. My question for Auto Camp, if I could, was that during the previous approval process, of which we're not familiar with, I don't know if it was ZBA or conservation or both, I imagine? And planning board as well, is that true?
Yep.
Was there mention of a potential liquor license and a facility to, to use the liquor license in any of those?
There was, I mean, that's not really why.
I mean, that's not really why I'm here tonight, but I'm happy to answer the question. There was in our, my name is Jeannie Campus, by the way. I'm an attorney at Nutter, McLennan &amp; Fish, and I represent Auto Camp. We were before the Planning Board and ZBA in 2019, and in our application materials, we did contemplate a liquor license pending approval from the Select Board.
Okay. So that wasn't news to them. So then, the reason I asked that is because I was wondering about the withdrawing without prejudice and waiving the one-year limitation, and what's the reasoning to that? Is that standard or...
Well, it's pretty...
Illegal standard.
Yeah, so we want to withdraw without prejudice so that we can reapply. We're not precluded in any way from reapplying. And unlike a lot of statutes, I've seen the liquor licensing statute has this provision at the very end saying that an applicant, the same applicant is precluded from applying for the same type of license for the same premises within one year of submission. And I think the intent there was for an unsuccessful applicant, so if you apply and you get denied, you can't reapply within a year. Here, obviously, we're not denied by any means yet. We haven't even come before you on the merits of the application. We're simply looking to withdraw and have the ability to refile the same application we have previously filed within one year.
We did the same thing in North Falmouth for, thank you, for the Tea Room before we held. Remember, we had, we never got to a vote, and actually their counsel asked to withdraw without prejudice because I think their counsel saw it was not going in a good direction. And I think at the time, they thought maybe they might come, maybe they still will, but, you know, might come back with a new plan. So we had, it's not, we have done it before.
Yeah. I mean, here, it's, I'll be honest, it's not so much that we're going to come back with a new application. It's, it's that we have some Board of Health issues that we want to take care of relating to the septic system on-site, and we want to make sure that those issues are fully resolved before we come, before you asking for a liquor license.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. Appreciate it. Any other questions while we're here?
Do you need a motion now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I move that we allow the Auto Camp to withdraw its application for a liquor license at 896 Palmer Avenue without prejudice and waive the one-year limitation of General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15A for resubmission of the same.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Can I just clarify? The address is 836 Palmer Avenue.
Oh, there's a typographical error.
I think there's a typo, yeah.
836.
836, yeah.
Instead of 896.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you for being here.
You too.
Okay, down to the minutes of meetings. Oh, wait a minute, number five, discuss Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant decommissioning elements and possible letter of concern. I brought this to the board because I attended a meeting at the Ducksbury Select Board a week ago, and there was some concerns raised by local legislators, representatives, Susan Moran, there was like five legislators, Mr. Keating had somebody there, many of the legislators themselves weren't there, but there was a couple of local representatives, not from our district but from the Ducksbury area. And there's been concerns raised, and I don't know if you had a chance to read the information in the packet, that the Nuclear Regulatory Committee Commission does sometimes approve discharges from nuclear plants into waterways, but apparently if there's enough concern, they take another look at it. And I just, I'm not a nuclear expert by any means, but I just feel like release a million gallons of radioactive water into Cape Cod Bay, I was very convinced by some of the literature that I read that that doesn't seem like a good idea. And I was wondering if this board would consider a letter of support for the positions of Representative Cutler and others who are advocating against such a release of water.
Yeah, my big concern, I mean, aside from the obvious, which I think is, you know, nobody feels good, I think, about the idea of that being released. But one of the things that I found was really compelling is a lot of the shell fishermen are very concerned that, A, this can harm their product because it, you know, will then go on to harm people, and even if that isn't the case, or we don't have data for a really long time, that it's going to harm their product because people are going to say these are oysters or scallops that live in an area where radioactive water has been discharged. So I, you know, Ducksbury, our folks, I mean, all along, that's just like an enormous industry that just barely squeaked by COVID because it was such a tough couple of years for them. And so the idea that we would then pile this on, you know, even if we take, put the other piece aside, I felt the economic impact, you know, shellfish, tourist industry, I mean, that's what, that's what we live on, and, you know, having some harm to that, even if you were to say there was a guarantee that this wasn't actually going to harm anyone, the perception alone is significant. So I, I would absolutely support that. I think there are a million reasons that we would need to.
And I also think that we are spending a lot of money on water and water treatment and keeping our water clean. So why wouldn't we go that next step? That was my first thought. My second thought was, you know, if we experiment with, with oysters or scallops to denitrify, why would we then, again, go in and put anything in the water that could damage or kill off shellfish? I can't see any downside.
Sending the letter?
Right.
Any other comments from the board? We'll take public comment. Want to come up? Oh, I'm sorry, were you?
Yeah.
We'll get you in a minute. Okay, thank you.
Mark Fineran, perhaps you can clear this up for me, or you might want to investigate. My understanding is that the levels of this water are monitored by the federal government, the Nuclear Regulatory Committee, and this particular exercise has been part of the everyday maintenance of that plant since the day it was built. They occasionally have to dump this water. Its levels are extremely low, so this is my understanding. And this is nothing out of the ordinary and nothing more than regular, the way regular maintenance on this plant has been performed since it was built 35 or 40 years ago. Why, all of a sudden, there is a great concern? If in fact my information is correct, seems to be unfounded. I think that, well, I personally would like to know if that is in fact correct. And what would separate this from any other time they've done it previously, provided it is below the specified levels?
Well, here's the reason. This is a different situation. They're decommissioning the plant.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean that the water, it doesn't, isn't, my understanding is it's the same level that it's always been, and whether it's decommissioning or they're just, whatever, changing the radiator fluid, if you prefer, because it's basically what it is. So can you answer that question?
In the meeting that I attended, there was questions from some folks that said, why won't they disclose what the levels are? Apparently, there's been no disclosure of what those levels are, so that's part of the concern. And the other thing is, this is a million gallons, not just a little bit for maintenance, it's the whole pool.
Again, you, you don't, no one has given us what the levels are. Like I said, I mean, I'm just playing the devil's advocate here, but I was told that that this water is below the standard and has, this process has been regular since the plant was built. It seems to me that...
Well, they've distributed a couple hundred thousand gallons here and there, but not the whole million.
What's, if, if it's, if it's below the regulated levels, which would also be of a cumulative nature, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's enough information here, and it doesn't seem like you can provide it for me either. So I think that before you write this letter, it might be incumbent upon you to find out what the answers to my questions are.
Well, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to have a concern, and if we're raising the concern, what happens in some communities where there is no concern raised, the Nuclear Regulatory doesn't get, Commission doesn't get any negative feedback, and they give some approvals?
What, I mean, why would you not want to know the answers to my question?
I do want to know.
Well, then I think that you should pursue it before you sign this letter, because...
I would say that the letter is in, in hopes of receiving that and for information.
Right, yeah. I think the letter would be, the way I understand it, the letter would be in furtherance of saying, this is a concern that requires further study, further information before this decision is, is made. Further information that's given to the public, given to the, you know, to residents that might be impacted. That's how I understood it.
My goal for this letter is to get attention from the governor and other legislators to inform the fact that we want Mass DEP to exercise their regulatory authority in supervision of how this discharge is managed. Right now, if we don't have public support for that, we might not, they might just defer to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, who might not act in Massachusetts' best interest, is my concern.
I mean, but again, has not the plant always operated under the guidelines of the NRC, which is in charge of all these plants?
Yeah.
And why, why would you think that they're about to break this? It just, there's not enough information there for me.
I'm not so sure that I want just the NRC to be involved. I want Mass Department of Environmental Regulations to be involved in overseeing the discharge. And when Holtech signed their deal to operate in Massachusetts, they agreed to abide by Massachusetts' environmental laws. So this letter is furtherance of asking the legislator and the governor to ensure that that process stays in place.
Well, it seems to me that you're implying...
If they find out that the liberals are safe, then maybe they'll say okay.
Seems to me that you're implying that they haven't operated so in the past, and again, it's my understanding that they always have, and this is no different.
All right, I got your point.
And we're not so sure, but we, I'd like to hear from Janice Azarovitz.
I think my question was pretty simple and straightforward.
Can we have a point of order?
All right, let Mrs. Azarovitz speak now, please.
My name is, my name is Janet Azarovitz. I am a member, I am a precinct member from Precinct 5, and I did bring this to you to ask for that, and I thank you very much. You've read what I've given you, and it was great to see you on the Zoom call, Doug. I was very happy to see that. The plant has been an issue for years, and the NRC is, most of them are, become part of the industry after they leave the commission, and they have, there are, they've changed rules as time has gone on so that it makes it more difficult for the people, you know, on this side of it to be able to bring anything forward. But it is asking for consideration of the governor and Holtech to give us more information. There's a lot of confusion about the amount of radioactivity that goes into these releases. There are standards set, but there are a lot of radionuclides that are not filtered out because they do have to filter the water before they release it in order to go by the standards set forth by the federal government and the state. For one element, tritium is a toxic element. It can cause cancer. It's not measured, and because it's similar to water H2O that goes through, this is H3O that goes through the system, it's not detected in any of the filtration systems. But those radionuclides do go to the bottom of the water, the body of water, and they can accumulate, and they do cause mutations when there are an accumulation in the DNA. So this letter is, is again, just asking for the public to have some input into what is going on, and the time, let's just wait rather than make, let them make that decision that they're going to release it. Actually, Fukushima, there's a scientist, Ken Buesler, a local man, a doctor of ocean radioactivity, who is, has worked with those in Fukushima and the dispersal of the water, radioactive water into the, to the bay. And it's been 20 years since Fukushima happened, and just to this day, I think it was a matter of days before Holtech decided that they were going to announce that they were going to just release this water. They're still deciding in Japan as to how safe this release of water. Granted, the amount of radiation that they want to release is much greater than what is being done here, the size of the catastrophe that happened there. But it's similar enough that it's taken 20 years before they really have come to a decision to release that water. So I, I do think it's timely. I think it should be done now before they start releasing the water to write this letter, and hopefully the government, the governor will step in. So I have more information, but I think you've enough, so I appreciate very much.
Well, thank you for taking interest and sharing that with us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, guys can debate afterwards. Okay, no problem. So, minutes of meetings, public session, January 10th. Did the board want to act on that? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Yes.
I motioned that we write the letter that was presented to us.
Would we like any modifications or changes?
Not specifically.
Okay.
I would second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, we also had the special events policy was never...
We weren't going to vote on it, I think. I thought the idea was...
It's a draft.
Did you want us to change the draft?
Yes.
You want us to vote? Vote to have us change the draft with your adjustments that you adjusted?
If you feel like you had the gist of what the comments were to, you know, include Select Board as the, sort of the executive authority to be appealed to?
Right.
Was there another?
Yes.
Sam wanted to add the schools that did not have to be exempt from.
And he added the word managing?
Managing.
Instead of limiting.
And the trash and recycling.
Recycling.
Those four items.
Yep.
I had a question about the appeal process.
Appeal process, thank you. That's why I thought there were enough things that it might be helpful to see another draft if we, for the appeal piece of it in particular. I mean, I think the rest, but just understanding what the appeal process would be, unless you think it's a delay. I mean, we're back here again on the...
Is that causing a delay that would be...
I think we'll be all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Do we have the gist of it all?
All right, very good. So we did get the minutes for January 10th in our packet, and we just received the other minutes for January 15th. I'm not sure if the board had a chance to review the second round or if you want to have more time.
Well, I reviewed both of them, but I certainly defer to others.
I have comments on the 15th.
Well, let's start with the 10th and get that one out of the way.
I'm sorry, were you been waiting to speak to something here? Apologize.
I might have missed it. It went so quickly, but I don't know if you dealt with the entertainment license for 87 Water Street.
Yes, we did it under the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
We voted it.
Oh, we made it easy.
You're done.
Blanket, vote.
You were so convincing just in your presence that week.
We were afraid to do anything different.
It passed by osmosis.
Yes.
Okay, on, on the minutes of January 10th, on the second page, C, the sentence says, "Vote to approve letter of support of Woods Hole Diversity Action Committee grant proposal for NSF includes," and nothing more.
That's the name of the grant. It's called NSF includes.
That isn't.
NSF Grant?
National Science Foundation.
Includes is a very... Includes is a very long acronym, yeah.
So why don't we, at least it, grant between NSF and includes? Does that make sense? So that we understand that includes is that, and then there's a period at the end.
Sure, and it's actually, also it's Diversity Advisory Committee. We get called the Action Committee because we do a lot of stuff.
Okay, good. All right, I like that. And then I have two more edits. On page four, in the fourth paragraph now where it says, "McGann has noticed there has not been as much transmission in the schools." I think it should say, "As there should have been with as many people close together in classrooms." And then I want to put "without masks" because I think it's not worded correctly. With as many people close together in classrooms without masks.
Okay.
Just to clarify the meaning of it, if we can make those edits. And then on page five, I have one more to do. Under 4B, where it's the Steampship Authority Board of Governors Peter James Jeffrey Fuck- Jeffrey, DC license, federal employee. I think that means District Court, DC.
No, I think he's like of Washington DC.
Washington DC, yeah.
Of Washington, okay, then unless we word it properly, guys, I couldn't figure it out. Okay, so of Washington DC, licensed federal employment, law attorney? Okay.
Yep.
Great. So I would move approval with those edits and release to the public.
I would second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't mind putting off the January 15th if other people haven't had a chance to review.
Were they in our packet?
They were emailed separately.
No, they were emailed separately, right? So I would feel comfortable just because we do issue our packet for the public, so maybe it makes sense to do it the next time.
I just mentioned my edits while we're here just because-
And me too.
I don't want to forget them.
Yep.
On page one, under Taylor said Charter Review Committee did nice work regarding, I mean, regarding recommendations. It should be for how we function as a board, not of how they function. It was about us. So that was an easy one. And then, as I go through, it says English Bag up Patterson Taylor, and it's all by last name except for Chair Brown, which is appropriate. But then as you get to page seven, it changes, and it says, "Sam Patterson asked Nancy Taylor said." I just think it should be consistent. That's all. Excuse me, sorry.
I have just a couple more edits that I would put in. On page five, discussion of potential future large-scale infrastructure projects. Patterson was concerned, I assume, about the operating budget. But he is not sure it includes sea level rise, environmental remediation, and affordable housing. So there's three, it should be three items that I mentioned. Those are my concerns that I raised. So not sure it includes environmental remediation, sea level rising, and affordable housing. Words to that effect. And then there's one more. On page seven, number five, this guy came up in our discussion, vote to create the, and this, because this is really a reference to a state statute, I think it used to say municipal light plant. And since we use the acronym later on, I want to put in parentheses MLP so that this is where it's defined. So it's consistent throughout. And then in the last paragraph on that same page seven, and then next to the last sentence, municipal light plant instead of company, just so we have, again, consistency. And those would be the edits I would like to see included in this set of minutes we can look at at our next opportunity.
And the only other thing, on page eight, Patterson motioned to strateg- that strategically they plan to submit a request for the state legislation to allow FAMET to go forward and proceed with the MLP. I thought I voted a no on that.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too.
Based on what Michael Palmer said, right?
You did vote a no.
That's what I thought, okay. And Angeli, did you vote no too?
Yes, she noted no because she was concerned it would undermine the support for the article.
So that was really a three to two, I think.
It was a three to two.
Yeah.
I saw that and wondered, but I figured it wasn't my job to correct that.
So it was Angeli and NT that were no, okay.
And I don't, Julian, did you want my markup?
I think he was taking notes.
He was taking notes.
Fine, okay.
I think I got it, thank you.
So are we going to go ahead and approve the 15th then, since we've talked it through? Do you feel all right about it?
It doesn't matter to me, I just don't know what our, I don't think there's any requirement that we don't vote it tonight. I mean, we never used to release the packet.
The sooner we vote it, the sooner we vote it and accept it, the sooner it can be posted and people can use it.
I'd move approval with the edits that Sam and Nancy just made.
Second.
I'm so sorry, hold on. These are, this is Saturday, the 15th.
That's right.
Yeah.
Except for the very last little bit.
I was here except for the very last part. Maybe we should review the tape of this, the tape on that. Because I know I voted no at the last meeting.
This was that, you voted no.
If you, okay, all right.
It was a five.
I remember it well because you were saying that you think that if we vote to put this on, it will seem rushed and will undermine the support of town meeting for the vote.
I just want to make sure I wasn't confusing it with the meeting we had two weeks ago where I also voted no on something. Me and Nancy also voted no.
Yeah.
All right.
Maybe it's just worth just whoever-
They can go, they can review the table.
Just review the 15th to make sure that-
Question about the vote that-
That vote.
That's the last vote you're talking about?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Suso, did you want to give us a supplemental report there?
Yes, I joined the Finance Committee for the regular weekly meeting this past Wednesday. They're full into their review of the fiscal year '23 operating budget. The board's next regular business meeting is set for Monday, February 28th. And Town Hall and Town Administrative Offices will be closed on Monday, February 21st for the President's Day holiday. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Would members want to have any reports?
Yeah, let me just mention, I participated in what was used to be called the Cape Cod and Islands Selectmen and Counselors Association. It's been changed now because they have, they've updated their bylaws. And they've now, because they wanted to keep a relatively short acronym, that organization is now called the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association. It's SIMLA, C-I-M-L-A, so at least recognize that you might get literature from a different organization, but it's the same.
It'll probably still come from Ed McMahon.
Yes, that's your link. So I wanted to mention that at that same meeting, this was just this past Friday, Alyssa Magnati from the, who was the CEO of the Housing Assistance Corporation, gave a very good presentation on accessory dwelling units and how they're beginning to be implemented in other places. They see this as one of the ways of providing affordable housing without necessarily changing the footprint of the town. So if you get a chance to tune in on that, I would recommend it to you. The last thing is an interesting one for the entire town. It was a presentation from Brian Baumgartel from the Barnstable County staff. And he's in charge of septic management loan program. And this loan program is available for anybody that has to upgrade their septic system to meet Title V requirements, or if they want to convert to an alternative D-Nite system, or if they are required to hook up to a sewer. So this loan program is available to anybody in the town that needs to upgrade their septic system in any way. So they should really follow the county and see whether their particular property, it is for residential properties only, not for business properties. So that came up, and I thought, wow, that's something that citizens of this town should be aware of.
Yeah, that's been in place for quite some time, actually.
It could be. I believe that is. It's a state revolving fund grant program, so I didn't, well, I was not aware of it. I haven't had that opportunity, I guess.
Did it come up, Sam, when we did searing? You know, through the water quality management? That's why, because I thought I've heard it before.
That's probably right.
I was just curious.
I just hadn't heard it as a Barnstable County program.
Yeah.
I thought it was straight to the state revolving fund. You know, I'd never heard it in conjunction with the county program, but it probably was, and I just didn't realize it, so.
Good reminder, though, for folks regardless.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
I got to attend this Sandwich Road Fire Station virtual presentation. I guess that kind of came sometime in the last month. Also, the Affordable Housing Committee meetings, EDIC meeting, and you just heard they recommended two additional board members, which is a CPC meeting. And then also I attended Matthew Briggs's Equal Court of Honor yesterday on behalf of you as the select board. That's it for me.
Thank you, Sam.
Pleasure.
Any other reports from other board members? We had a, Mr. Suso and I talked about the fact that our policy book is about this big. And I'm wondering if the board wants to get into taking a look at that. There's about a dozen of them that seem like they need some clarification and some updating before they go live on the website. And so Mr. Suso's working on that. But at the same time, I thought it might be a good opportunity for us to consider all these policies. And if some of them are outdated or inappropriate, maybe get rid of them. And then also, we've got a couple new policies that may be needed, which is consideration of the, you know, surplus property. Because when we had that gun issue, we realized there was no policy for that. We might want to put that in place. We've had recommendations from the Transportation Committee to consider whether or not we should have a policy for the embarkation fee. And there may be other policies that we're overlooking that should be in place. What I'm getting at is, do we want to have another Saturday meeting to do just policies?
Yeah, I think-
It could take quite a bit of time.
I think it would also be really great to have our new DEI officer on that to make sure our policies are equitable as we're reviewing them.
Good point. Thanks, good thought. Is everyone available possibly for March 5th? And if not, then we could choose a different date.
And I'm sorry, I'm having like a little bit of an asthma attack, so I'm just, I'm fine. It's just something is getting, allergy, so I'm just taking this down to breathe.
Do you have an inhaler or anything?
It's in my car, you know, so very useful to me right now, but I'm fine. I just need to take this down, so. Okay, thank you.
If we're doing financial policies, would we invite Jennifer Mullen? And is that an issue, having her come on Saturday?
We could identify what those policies are and-
Okay.
I want to keep asking staff to come on Saturdays unless we really need them.
I agree, and I think this-
I'm sorry, relative to the finance, there was the issue about that transfer tax going for the Affordable Housing Fund. And, you know, that could be a policy issue that would allow it to be more streamlined and not have to get on the agenda every year for budget consideration. So that could be brought up at the same time. I think Jennifer actually mentioned that that would be a way of handling that. That's why it came to mind.
Good point. Well, so Mr. Suso, we have a little bit of time before March 5th. So if you want to kind of develop what that agenda would look like and then share it with Ms. Mullen, if she wants, if she can attend, she can. If not, she could send some thoughts ahead of time for consideration.
We have a lot of policies.
We do.
We may, like realistically, take a look at five or three, you know what I mean?
We'll look at the dozen that are questionable first.
Yeah, I agree. We'll start with those. And I also think that we won't vote any financial policies without them going.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Okay.
And we, and I think this is a good time, as we do this exercise, to think about what we would do for an onboarding packet for new board members. Because to me, these are the exact things that should be in a packet to give to someone when they come on the board, that they can, I mean, I understand they're going to be on the website, but that's not the same thing.
Right.
You know, as being handed something and saying, these are kind of the relevant things that are going to help shape some of the decisions that come, that you have to make as a board member. So this is a great time to kind of do this exercise and start to think about what would be in that. And I think I had sent some notes about what would be, what we talked about when we had that Saturday meeting, what might also be in there for onboarding.
Like a building map reference guide.
You know, the charter.
That's important.
The charter should be in, the LCP, the like strategic, you know, so that you have a sense.
Select board handbook, essentially.
Exactly, exactly.
And we should all have that.
Agreed.
It's really helpful.
As many times I wish I did have it in hand.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's still times that I wish I had it.
Yeah, absolutely.
For the March 5th meeting, should we take a look at the policies and make a priority list of which ones we want to go through? Or do you, do you guys already have an idea?
We have an idea, those 12, right?
Well, that was the first, the first thought was that those obviously-
There are 10 or 12 that are fuzzy. All the others are now on the Selective's page as policies. They've all been placed on there by Diane Davidson.
Thank you, Diane.
Yeah.
So why don't we start with the 12 that are not conclusive?
Yep.
And then we can also broaden our discussion about consideration of other new policies.
As we go on.
As we go along.
Better for your nose.
What, yeah, what time were you anticipating it?
Well, we started at eight last time, and we got out early. Would that be good?
Eight to 11 or something?
Do you want to stay with that, or do you prefer something different?
About 8:30. It's winter.
How about five? Let's go five, five o'clock in the morning is better. Yeah, earlier the better.
I think we're going to have trouble getting coverage for CCTV.
I start to snore.
Eight thirty to 11, eight thirty to 11:30, or what do we?
Whatever you guys do.
Sam's going to make us stay till 11:30 now.
Exactly.
Let's tend to at least say eight thirty to 11:30.
Okay. And I'm more than happy to bring coffee and muffins or whatever, bagels.
Bagels are good.
Bagels, okay.
Sure, great, thank you.
I'll do Dunkin' Donuts, coffee, and bagels.
Awesome. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Oh, wait. So, discussion of future agenda items, I still had two more things.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, good, I withdraw my-
Thank you. I realize that it's been about six months since we hired Jackie, our new DEI officer, for the town and for the schools. And so I'd like to invite her to come to an upcoming meeting to talk about what she's been doing, what her goals are, how we can support her.
Okay.
And I know that there is a process for the affordable housing.
Or there?
No, for the funds, for developers to apply for the funds. And I know that we will hear about those when those come in, but we haven't heard anything in a while. It sounds like there's nobody going for that money.
An update?
An update on that, and then also maybe a discussion on, is there something that we need to be doing to entice developers to come get that money? I have no idea, but I'd like to talk about that.
Good idea.
Yeah. And, sorry. And Mr. Suso, I meant to email you about this earlier, and so I apologize if you don't have an answer, but I wanted to know if there was any update on the FAMET Housing Corp Scranton Avenue project. Last, I think they went through zoning and maybe there's nothing new, but it's just been a while since we-
Well, they received their comprehensive permit from ZBA, so those deadlines were met.
Yeah.
Great, awesome.
They'll need to take the next step to-
The state.
Yeah, try to secure state funding.
Okay.
They'd be carrying that ball, and we're working internally in support of potential roadway improvements there in that section of Main Street.
Okay, great.
To be in support of that project, so.
But they met all the deadlines that we had all talked about, that we were worried about from the town side, so.
That's what I thought.
That was good.
Just wanted confirmation. Thank you.
Thanks to ZBA for working efficiently on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they move it.
Appreciate it very much.
Now I'm done.
I had sent to Julian and Doug a request that you might actually get the Sustainability Coordinator at HOE to come and make a presentation on her role. And she's done similar to what Rosemary was saying. She actually has got a lot of grant money that's more than paid, like 10 times overpaid for her position with HOE. But she, you know, has been doing the job for about two or three years. And she gave a presentation to the Rotary Club, and I was pretty impressed. So I think it would be an example of somebody serving a similar role- So I think it would be an example of somebody serving a similar role with another organization like Woods Hole Oceanographic that has the same kind of sustainability or some of the same kind of sustainability issues that we have. And probably even affordable housing, they didn't necessarily mention that.
Right.
Stephanie Madsen?
Yes.
And did Stephanie indicate her availability to attend a meeting?
I didn't.
Oh, you just wanted to throw the-
I just said, I think that would be something we should consider, and if we could reach out to her, that would be great, but I didn't want to presume that.
I see.
At this point, it's up to you guys to arrange for a particular date when she might be invited.
Is that something you wanted, a work session or a formal business meeting?
Just a general presentation, I don't know what, what would a work session?
He's saying, I think, the idea of a Saturday being a work session. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Suso, as opposed to?
Right.
I think we go on the regular agenda because it will have more public visibility. I think the Saturday meetings are kind of, people might still watch, but it's more of us, more internal.
Working group type of thing, yeah.
I think that's more of a public presentation.
She did it in 15 minutes, she already has a slide presentation. So it was well done, and a pretty good example of somebody serving in that kind of a position.
That'd be a good idea, if we could fit that in sometime in the next month or so.
I move adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.